I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome here, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. And at this time, I'd like to give the opening to Counselor Susan Penner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems that in today's political climate, we are discouraged from thinking critically and rather conditioned to see our side as the right side and the other side as the enemy. But the truth is, no political party or politician has a monopoly on truth, wisdom, or morality. Every party or politician, no matter how well-intentioned, has weaknesses. If we can't admit when our party or leaders get it wrong, or when ones we don't support get it right, then we aren't truly thinking critically, we're just cheering for a team. That doesn't mean we have to abandon our political beliefs. It means we shouldn't support a party, platform, or politi— it doesn't mean we shouldn't support a party, platform, or politician. In fact, we should. But it does mean we should be willing to ask hard questions, challenge assumptions, and hold our leaders accountable, even when they're the ones we vote for. Thinking critically about politics means going beyond headlines, partisan talking points, and emotional reactions to engage with issues thoughtfully and objectively. Our allegiance should not come at the cost of supporting or defending every decision that is made. This removes accountability and ends up hurting all of us in the long run. No politician or party is perfect. It's important we hold all leaders accountable, not just the ones on the other side. By thinking critically about politics, we strengthen democracy and ensure that our choices are guided by reason, not just rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penner. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us, looking for a motion to adopt. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Swagstra. Call for the question. All who are in favor, opposed, that is carried. Counselor, are there any— we have the minutes of February 18, 2025, the regular council meeting. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Penner?
Actually, a point of question here, Mr. Mayor. I believe Counselor Penner was not excused from us last meeting.
That is my next sticky note.
And motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, second by Counselor Penner. Call for the question. All who are in favor, opposed, that is carried. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none at this time. I would like to have a motion to excuse Counselor Susan Penner from the February 18 meeting, who was forgotten, and also Counselor Bill Hebert and Jake Siemens from this March 4 meeting. Motion to approve by Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Swagstra. Call for the question. All who are in favor, opposed, that is carried. Yes, Counselor Penner, we did forget to excuse you last—
Thanks for drawing attention to it.
Well, the challenge is, we probably would have forgotten today, too. But for Amanda, thank you, Amanda, for saving us from ourselves. Okay, it's six—oh, it's, yeah, 7:35, so we'll go directly into the public hearings. We have 6:08. This is the 2025 financial plan. At this time, we'll close the council meeting, open the public hearing. And Mr. Workning, should we call on Mr. Horarchuk?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am pleased to be presenting the city's 2025 financial plan to highlight some of the main items that are planned for the upcoming year. The annual budget cycle is almost a continuous process. For the 2025 budget year, it started early in 2024. Throughout the process, input is provided by staff, management, and council. The financial plan being presented today is based on the recommendations of council provided at their final review in November. Some of the highlights for 2025 include a municipal mill rate of 14.4 mills, which remains the same as 2024. 2025 was, however, a reassessment year, so overall, municipal taxes will increase by the same percentage as the assessment increase for each property. Utility rates will increase by an average of 3%, while residential garbage collection rates will increase by 4.5%. Fees for permits are up 5%, and land use application fees will increase by 2.5%. The overall capital program for 2025 is budgeted at $36.6 million. Some of the larger budgeted projects include the completion of the event center, the Lowen PTH-12 intersection renewal, Park Road West Forest Main Twinning, as well as the Millwork Drive sewer replacement. Overall, projected revenues for 2025 are just over $42 million. Similar to other years, property taxes are the city's largest source of revenue, accounting for just over half of the overall revenue amount. For 2025, there was a property value growth of 14.9%. Commercial properties make up about 24% of the total property values in the city, and with the provincial portioning system, a lower portion of residential property values are subject to property tax than commercial property values. As I mentioned earlier, the property tax rate of 14.4 mills is unchanged from 2024. 54% of the budgeted municipal revenues are from property taxes. $22.7 million is to be raised by property taxes in 2025, and $21.6 million of this is via mill rate. The city is also required to collect the education and school taxes on behalf of the province and Hanover School Division. As in previous years, this is projected to make up roughly half of the total tax revenue The average market value for a dwelling in Steinbach is roughly $250,000. Based on this and the budgeted municipal mill rate, the average city property tax bill works out to roughly $135 a month. In addition to regular property taxes, supplementary property taxes are levied on new construction or where there was an addition or improvement to increase the value of the property. This is expected to provide an additional $675,000 in 2025. Federal and provincial operating grants have also been a consistent source of revenue for the city. The provincial per capita tax sharing grant is expected to provide $4.6 million in 2025, while the federal gas tax grant will provide just over $1 million. One of the main non-tax revenues for the city is from user fees. These are fees paid by those who benefit from the service provided. Some services compete with the open market, but a number of the rates are subsidized for programs to be accessible. Development in Steinbach stayed strong in 2024, with just under $105 million in total permit values. This activity is expected to continue into 2025 and beyond. Now we will look at some of the programs that are funded by these revenues. Overall, the expenses are equal to the projected revenues at just over $42 million. Some 2025 programs include waste reduction and recycling at just over $1.1 million, support for the J-Cup Public Library at $455,000, the beautification program at $286,000, and various other programs as listed. Every year, the city provides grants for various organizations throughout the city. In 2025, these grants total just over $1 million, with the recipients as listed. One of the largest city expenses is that of our employees. The total labor cost, including benefits, for 2025 is budgeted at $12 million, or roughly a third of the city's operating budget. Of this total, the Aquatic Center makes up about 19% of the total labor hours, the largest of any city department. Protective services includes RCMP, 47 firefighters and eight fire trucks, as well as a community services officer to enforce city bylaws. The total cost of these services is budgeted at $5.6 million for the upcoming year. The city currently has almost 145 kilometers of road surface. The maintenance for this infrastructure can depend significantly on the weather in any given year, and for 2025, is expected to cost $3.2 million. Solid Waste Services. We provide both curbside and on-demand pickup services to both residential and commercial properties. The cost of providing these services is expected to reach $3.3 million for the upcoming year, which is funded by user fees. Our primary recreation facilities include the Aquatic Center, Arena, AD Penner Park, Curling Rink, and Soccer Park, as well as various green space and parks around the city. The expected cost of operating and maintaining these facilities is budgeted at $5.8 million Both the number of customers serviced by the water and wastewater utility and the length of the underground infrastructure network continue to grow. The expected cost to maintain this infrastructure and provide the utility services is expected to be $4.7 million in 2025. In addition to the typical operating expenses that the city regularly incurs, larger projects also require significant funding. Some of this comes from reserve funds that have been saved in previous years, while other projects will require debt funding. Some of the main projects for the upcoming year include equipment replacement, the Park Road West Forest Main Twinning, the completion of the Event Center, and the PTH-12 Lowen Intersection. Total capital program for the year is expected to be just over $36.5 million. The city will periodically issue debt in order to add or renew various infrastructure or facilities throughout the city. Each loan will fund a specific project. In 2025, four projects have a debt component: the Event Center construction, the Lowen Boulevard PTH-12 intersection, the Fire Department Ladder Truck, and the Forest Main Twinning. This is expected to create $13.25 million of new debt, while $2.6 million of previously issued debt will be paid off. The city continues to use a five-year amortization term for all of its debt, allowing us to borrow at lower interest rates than if a longer term was used. Our average interest rate for 2025 is just over 4%, while the debt balance at the end of the year is expected to be $21.5 million. Payments that are required for previously issued debt will total $3.1 million in 2025. Of this amount, $443,000 is interest. Funding for these debt payments is raised through property taxation, and for 2025, $1.945 mills will be required to raise the necessary funds. This equates to 13.5% of the total city tax rate. And finally, a longer-term overview of some of the expected requirements in future years. The 2025 program is currently budgeted at $36.6 million, which includes infrastructure renewal, the completion of the Event Center, and the Forest Main Twinning. Beyond that, programs of $18.2 million, $58.2 million, and $56.5 million are currently estimated for the following three years. That concludes the presentation of the 2025 financial plan. Thank you, members of council. If there are any questions, I can ask them now.
Thank you, Brian, for your presentation. Just curious of the—what would be the big-ticket items that are calling for the increase? Because with the assessment increase, most years, we will lower the mill rate so that —we've often come to a net zero. But in this case, you're recommending we keep it at the mill rate. What are the stressors? What are the big projects that are causing this to happen?
So the overall tax increase, again, due to the reassessment, is 14.8%. So that translates to about $2.9 million. The largest items that contribute to that—the single largest—is the debt payment. It's going up by about $1.35 million. So almost half of that increase is going to fund the additional debt payment. A few of the other larger increases: policing is going up about $400,000. The Parks and Rec budget overall, including Aquatic Center, Arenas, Parks, is going up about $800,000. And then the Public Works budget is going up by about $300,000, which, again, is the majority of the increase.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Brian? Go ahead, Counselor.
Just want to be clear. So 14.8% increase in assessment, and by leaving the mill rate the same, that means there's going to be a property tax increase of 14.8%. Not necessarily evenly across the board, but depending on—
Our property tax revenue will go up by 14.8%.
So this is going to be a very significant tax increase?
Yes. And again, similar to other reassessment years, it's tough to nail down exactly how much of the increased assessment is due to reassessment versus actual growth in the city. Again, based on the historical increases that we've seen for real growth over the past number of years, we're expecting that to be about 3.5%. So yes, the average reassessment increase could potentially be around 11%.
Okay. That $400,000 for the RCMP you mentioned, why would there be such a significant increase in that line?
That's just based on the budget that they provide to us, based on the number of officers that they are expecting to have for the year.
So who's "they"?
The RCMP.
The federal government gives up the budget? So we don't have any say in that in terms of—
Other than requesting the number of officers that we want patrolling—
Is that money going to officers, additional officers, or is that just for, like, expenses and upgrades?
I haven't looked at the policing budget that—
Okay, so that we don't really have a lot of control over?
Yes, correct.
Okay. $850,000 for Parks and Rec. Now, that is including the money that is going to operate the new Event Center?
That's correct.
Correctly. I personally—I mean, we talked about this at study session. I personally would like to see that amount in our grants line versus just getting lost, so to speak, in the budget. So we have a clear idea how much that is costing. That doesn't change anything in terms of what we're talking about here today, but I just think it's—makes more sense that way. So that's just a point maybe for study session. And then, if you could just explain Public Works, what is that $300,000 going to?
A big chunk is actually repair and maintenance for the equipment. We've been over-budget the last few years, so we bumped up the budget accordingly. And then there is also, because of some of the larger increases to the capital project costs, some project—road projects have been delayed, so there is some more asphalt repair required.
Okay. Just also, I mentioned the grants. I'd like to see the operating for the Event Center in the grants line. I'm also looking at the grants here, and I think we also—in—we could do our study session in July, need to review the Chamber of Commerce grant. Their grant is 0.5, is that correct? 0.5 of business tax for the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, it is the—
When we approve that, so that they go up automatically every year with assessment. I know when I, you know, supported that, the intent was never—like, the mill rate wasn't nearly as valuable, and my intent was never that they just get an indefinite increase. Just for comparison, the only other chamber I know that gets municipal funding is Winkler, I believe, and they get $65,000. So I feel this $225,000 is way out of line, and I think we need to review that. Again, that's not—it doesn't affect residential property taxes, but it does impact our businesses, so that's something we can review. Other than that, I think that's all my questions or comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just specifically on the debt management, obviously, a big driver of this increase is the amount of extra debt that's been taken on, and we have our five-year debt policy, which, of course, we pay things off in five years, but it also means that the payments are a lot larger. So my question is that—it says here that the average interest rate we've been paying for the new—that we're paying for the new debt is 4.03%. If that were to be 10-, 15-, or 20-year debt, what would likely—what type of change would we expect to see on that average interest rate? Like, I'm assuming the interest rate would be higher the longer the debt amortization goes.
It is always higher. As to the exact amount, it varies. Again, I don't have the figures with me, but yes, it is generally lower for five-year interest rates than a longer 10- or 15-year term would be.
So then just—to follow up, that while on a short-term basis, you know, if we were to stretch those debt payments out, on a short term, we could potentially mitigate some of that increase now. Over the long term, if you're taking on the same—if you're doing the same projects, you will ultimately be paying more in taxes if you're paying it off over a longer period of time?
Correct. You obviously would be not done with any debt payment after five years, and it would just be stretched out longer, and yes, you would, in the long run, be—end up paying more, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Anything for the council? Okay. Thank you, Brian. Okay. Mr. Workning, question to you. You want us to approve this by motion?
Yes, unless there are questions from the gallery. But the financial plan, once council is prepared to make a decision, is a simple resolution to approve.
Are there any questions, comments, or objections to this file? State your name and address.
Hello, I'm Gary Snyder, 534 Wilson Street. I have a question relating to the 2025 budget, focusing on the upkeep of city infrastructure. The 2025 budget package provides a seven-year look forward, showing the major capital items that the city is planning to invest in, and I think you saw that in the slide that Brian showed. For a non-expert, it's difficult to analyze how those numbers relate to the actual needs of the city, and whether they fall below, hit the mark, or rise above the rate at which our infrastructure is wearing out. What I can see is our past audited statements, and for the period from 2010 to 2022, the city balance sheet shows the book value of our city's infrastructure has been declining compared to what it originally cost to build. To me, that would indicate that we've not been keeping up. Now, the new Event Center, a major capital project, makes it kind of hard to determine what's happening in '23 and '24, but did this trend continue or did it not? So my question is, what are the means and measures that the city uses to ensure that we're not falling behind and that our infrastructure remains strong and functional for the long term without burdening future generations with avoidable costs?
Okay, that's a very good question. We do have an inventory of our infrastructure and at what level it's at, but I think I will turn that over to administration to answer that question more effectively.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try and address it, that there's a lot going on in that question. I don't have, obviously, the detail in front of me, but I would say generally, the city council and the city administration, just for the fact of keeping a long-term capital plan document that you referenced, while the provincial requirement is that it include a five-year look ahead. The city of Steinbach has tried to maintain anywhere between a seven- and a 10-year look ahead as far as an official document. It's appeared in various formats over the past decades. And the city employs a—an engineering department of four staff. Along with the expertise within the city's engineering department is the ability to analyze models, for example, to determine, is the city's infrastructure capacity able to maintain existing services to existing built-up areas and also be able to grow and expand to accommodate new service areas that do come up from time to time? And through various mathematical models, that's the best way that the city can use that data that we have, as well as industry averages, to determine, you know, planning for the future, as well as how does the city address the existing infrastructure that's already installed and be able to maintain it. Fortunately, the city of Steinbach, from an organization and from public infrastructure, is a fairly young community. I believe the first sewer and water lines were installed in the late 1950s. Relative to urban centers, many of them across Canada, they have infrastructure systems that are well over 100 years old, and certainly, the challenges in maintaining those kinds of infrastructure systems are significantly more complex and challenging with that kind of aging. And with that more recent type of infrastructure, the city has been able to take advantage of newer and more resilient materials such as PVC, which tend to have a fairly predictable and longer service life than some of the older materials that used to be used. Other than that, the city has also begun using different models to evaluate its pavement infrastructure, where we have consultants come in to do a review and actually analyze the relative repair index of all the city's streets. The—if I recall correctly, out of a total available points rating of 100, the most recent review of the city's concrete and asphalt streets indicated a rating of 72, which is considered very good, and relative to other communities or other urban centers is above average. I will acknowledge that as the city grows and as its infrastructure ages, there is always a greater and greater challenge to be able to allocate the appropriate financial and professional resources to maintain its infrastructure. Even though the book value of the assets, as you mentioned, appear to be declining on a net basis, again, relative to other comparable cities that the city is aware of, the city's representative information and as far as the overall life remaining of the assets that it has installed, again, is above average as compared to other urban jurisdictions. So in a nutshell—I tried to keep it short, but hopefully, that's answered your question.
Very good, thank you. In a nutshell, I do believe, like, council has always had a high priority on infrastructure renewal and replacement, and so I think that if you compare it to many cities our size, we're doing fairly well, like, even if the numbers are showing that the balance sheet is declining. One of the—one thing I do want to say, we've got—as a city, as a council, we have strategic priorities, and for those for 2022 to 2026, for this term, in no apparent order, is city relations, enhanced safety, infrastructure renewal, and expansion. So that's always there. It's one of our priorities, and also recreation and cultural facility renewal. So we are definitely working down that road, like, we have something going in all of those priorities. We're working on that, as you can see in our city, and like, within enhancing our infrastructure, highway— Highway 12 and Lowen Boulevard, that's one of the, that's a big one. It's a very, it's a $14 million intersection that we're replacing. And, and we're, we're enhancing so it works better and it handles the traffic better. Also, the event center, of course, that's part of the recreational renewal. So we are actively, we are actually actively pursuing the strategic priorities that we, we set in 2022. So, and then infrastructure renewal is one of those. But thanks for bringing that up. Thank you. Is there anyone else with questions, comments, or objection to this file? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion that we approve this budget in principle.
Okay. Second by Counselor Susan Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year, of course, the budget is a balancing act, and there are difficult decisions that need to be made. This year is, has been a uniquely challenging budget. And we knew that it was going to be challenging going in. There are a number of items that are obviously significantly impacting our overall, our overall expenses. And so we are obviously taking on a lot of infrastructure renewal, as has been listed there. We are having to borrow a significant amount of money for things such as the Lowen Boulevard, Highway 12 intersection. 3.5 million of that is being borrowed by us. This is a project that we have to do. We're doing it in partnership with the province. If we were not contributing our share, that intersection upgrade would not be happening. And obviously, we need to make sure that, that intersection upgrade happens. We're borrowing $2 million for the fire department ladder truck. Again, we need to make sure that the, that our fire department has up-to-date equipment. And I remember when we got the previous ladder truck, that was a long time ago. And these upgrades have to happen. The Forest Main 20 borrowing is to 2.75 million. Of course, we need to make sure that, that we have the necessary water capacity for a growing city. And 5 million of this year's debt is also for the event center. The event center, of course, is the largest project that we've ever done in our history. Total cost, when you put it all together, is about 74 million. And the city is contributing just over 30 million of that in total. Obviously, significant contributions from the private sector and other levels of government. But the city is contributing the largest portion of that 74 million dollars. And so what this does tell us is that the old maxim that growth pays for itself is not true. Because obviously, if the city was not growing, we wouldn't be having to do a lot of these things. If the city was not growing, we would not be building an event center. If it was not growing, we wouldn't need to upgrade Highway 12, because the traffic would just stay at the same level. If the city wasn't growing, we wouldn't have to upgrade our, our water supply capacity in order to deal with, to make sure we have the necessary sewer and water capacity. These are all challenges that come with a growing city. If the city wasn't growing, we wouldn't have to, on a periodic basis, increase the number of RCMP officers. And of course, one of the challenges this year is that we're not increasing the total number of officers. But as you've probably read about in the news, because this has been gotten a fair bit of coverage, RCMP costs are not controlled by the city. All that we're able to do is we're able to save the number of officers that we wish to have. But the actual amount that, that it costs for them, that's determined in a bargaining process between the federal government and the RCMP union. That's not something the city has direct control over, and that obviously has been a, has been a point of frustration. There is extra money that's being spent on public works, because we have to make sure that we keep up with upgrades within the city. And parks and rec, a large part of that increase is because we do have to contribute towards the operating costs of the, of our event center. We have the reality that we've, we have fewer reserves now than we did a couple of years ago. And that's because we made tough choices. When the event center cost went up, which we knew that was a possibility. But obviously, during the pandemic, costs went up a lot in a lot of things, in terms of dealing with any kind of construction. And so we had to use those reserves. And that means that when planning a budget, we're not able to access reserves as much, because much of that has already been used for the event center, which means that for necessary infrastructure items, we have to take it out of the, we have to take it out of our, it comes out of the operating budget or debt. And of course, that impacts taxes. The mill rate that we're taking is being left at the same at $14.4 million, which does mean that there is an overall increase. The property value growth is 14.9%. That's not all tax increase. The, the growth does, can pay for some of that. Around 4% or so is typically what we have year over year. But then obviously, the balance, you know, that, that does work out to be a tax increase. And so the debt payment just alone is 1.35 million more than it was last year. And obviously, there is no way to paper over that. We can't hide that. That is just the reality. The reason I asked the questions that I did of our, our financial individual, Brian, Mr. Hertchek, the reason I asked those questions about, well, what if we were to do the borrowing over a longer period of time, is that is always an option. We could change the borrowing by, policy. We could borrow over 10, 15, or 20 years. But here is the harsh reality. If we do that, we can save money in the short term right now on this particular budget, but we will, taxpayers will still pay more for those same projects in the, in the overall term. Because the interest rate that's being paid is higher, and when you're paying it off over a longer period of time, it's, you just, you are, it does cost more. And plus, you've got the reality that we're burdening future councils with the cost of projects that, that we're taking on now. And so instead of paying something off in five years, you're paying it off in 15 or 20 years, which means that you've got less fiscal room to take care of necessary infrastructure projects. And so I don't think that changing that policy would make sense at this point. Yes, right now, when we're taking on 13.25 million in new debt and only retiring 2.6 million, that means that we're taking on over $10 million of new debt this year, which means significant debt payments, which is impacting the tax rate. And that is a challenge. But most of the time, in most years, that five-year borrowing policy, we see the benefits of it. And so, and, and we are in a much better fiscal situation now, having that policy for the last 30 years plus than if we did not have that policy in place. And so I think it would be short-sighted if we tried to say that, well, we'll try to hide the increase here. We'll just put it, you know, we'll borrow everything over a longer period of time, because that's not fair to our, to our residents. Because then that will just end up costing more in the long run. I look at the, the programs that we're, that we are spending money on. These are important programs. We are prioritizing infrastructure, which is the number-one priority of any municipality, or at least it should be. No municipality should be cutting infrastructure in order to pay for recreation projects, or, you know, other sort of grant programs and such. We are not doing that. I am very proud of our infrastructure spending and the work that we're doing in terms of the underground infrastructure, fixing our roads. We're going to keep doing that. And we're not going to stop doing that, because we're faced with some tough choices based on, you know, other projects that we're doing. The events are, event are being an obvious one. We are not going to put those projects on hold and the necessary maintenance and upgrades because of the fact that we have some significant costs from our new, from our new event center. And so it is a challenging budget, but I believe it is the right path forward. And I don't paper it over. It is, it's difficult, but I think it is the, the right path to go. So I move, I would support moving ahead with this budget.
Thank you, Counselor Swigster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to reiterate. Counselor Swigster did a good job of summarizing it. But I do want to say that none of us take this lightly. I know myself, I have spent considerable time thinking how, like, what can we do to, you know, lower the mill rate? What can we do so the tax increase is less? But there is not frivolous spending in this budget. We're doing it the same way we always do. We run a tight ship. And I know this council, for as long as I've been on council, has just really worked hard to toe the line. And in spite of the, the tax increase, we are still doing that with this. It is really an adjustment that needs to be made. It's a new normal in terms of the increase. When I think of construction costs, and what we were quoted on a lot of projects five years ago, to when we're, they actually come to fruition, costs have doubled, tripled. And it's just not feasible that we could continue doing what we're doing with the costs having increased as they have without this tax increase. Again, I just want to reiterate that we genuinely believe this is necessary, and we do not take this lightly. And it's just something we need to do, and hopefully. The, the other thing I would just like to point out, I've often thought, you know, maybe, you know, this is going to be painful for five years, because we have the rec center debt payment. But you know, that's not even half of what the debt payment's going to be. So we can't really blame it on that. And further, even when that debt expires, we've got major projects in terms of like a water treatment facility that's coming down the pipe. That's probably going to be, no joke, $100 million. This is just kind of the new normal we're operating with in terms of costs and things we need to do for a city.
Thank you very much. Anything further, counsel? Counselor Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to first start off with, and this is something that I get asked a lot, and it's, we're talking about our budget. And they say, well, the mill rate didn't go up, so the taxes won't go up. The mill rate is essentially a multiplier on your assessed value of your house. So if the value of your house goes up, even though we hold the mill rate even, it's the multiple, the multiplier is still the same, but the assessed is up. So I just wanted to get that out, out in the public, so to, to understand. When, when we say that there's, there's no mill rate increase, that doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes are staying the same. Inversely, also, we've, we've worked very hard over the last numerous years to, to hold the line on no net increases. So we've decreased the mill rate. We've tried to keep that tax burden on the, on the individual at, at a net even. And the reality is municipal governments are in the service industry. Being in service, you have to ask, well, what are we going to cut then? And service industry is one of the hardest hit by inflation. Inflation in terms of wages, inflation in terms of product. And so with the, with us being in service industry and being hit, for numerous years, we were able to hold the line. But eventually, you see the reserves go to a point where we say, this is, this is getting uncomfortable. We need to start, we need to make sure that the future is being built up. And unfortunately, that is where we are. We are at that point today. But to highlight, that's, within our service industries, we have $22.6 million budgeted out of a $42 million budget. It's a significant amount that's going to services. So you have to ask, do we cut police and fire? Do we cut transportation? Do we cut solid waste? Recreation services? Water? None of these, in my opinion, are on the table to reduce the budgets to, because we need to ensure that the quality of life for our individuals is continually getting better as the city grows, not decreasing. With regards to possible solutions of spreading the debt out further, Mr. Hertchek highlighted it, that there's $3.1 million in debt payments this year, but 443,000 in interest. That's a significant amount of interest. And that's only on a five-year amortization. So we need to make sure that we're keeping that, our debts as minimal as possible, on a shorter term as possible. And so that does then mean, when we've come into the stressors of what's gone on in terms of inflation over the last couple of years, eventually, the egg is going to crack, and we're going to have to open it up. Having said that, though, part of being able to avoid debt is we are putting five, allotting $5 million towards reserves to continue to build those back up, to make sure that there is safety, and there is a little bit more, more room within the budget to account for these things in the future as well, so that hopefully, significant tax increases would never have, won't have to happen, or at least not in the near future, without something being linked directly to large infrastructure. So it is unfortunate. I don't, I'm not happy with it, but I'm also not pleased with the way that a lot of prices have happened over the last, last two, three years. And this is, this is the first time that the resident is seeing it on their property tax bill, so.
Anything further, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Counselor Swigster has said, this is a challenging budget. And as Counselor Penner said, you know, a lot of thought has gone in the council as we review these, to know what is in the best interest of the taxpayer. And we consider infrastructure and employees and all these other programs that we're running. So I'd like to thank our administration, our financial board or group, Mr. Rentschak, in presenting this very comprehensive report that is not only complicated, but to an extent also understandable by council and also by the taxpayer. Well, thank you very much for all the work that you've done on that. You know, you presented the, the revenue, you presented the, the expenses. And we can see that our administration is really good at stewards of the taxpayer's money. So my hat goes off to our administration and finances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything in closing?
No.
Well, counsel, great comments. Lots has been said, and lots of great things have been said. I too, I have a challenge with this budget. Honestly, I don't like tax increases. I don't like them. And we've done very, we've done a great job most years when there have been assessment, in, value assessment, and increase assessment. We've, we brought the mill rate down to net zero. Looking forward to this year, it looks like that, that's not, that's not a possibility. With the, all these things that we look at, as Counselor Swigster said, are important. RCMP is important. Public safety is important. Fire trucks, ladder trucks are important. Public works, maintaining our equipment in public works and doing, getting projects done, smaller projects done without, without debentures is very important, too. And I think that's where a lot of these costs are coming from. And of course, the, the, the extra debt that is, that is being incurred through projects that we have done, we've been very aggressive with projects that have to be done as we're growing. We've, we have, we have lots of cars on roads. We've got, we have to upgrade the roads. We have to make sure that they can carry those people to where they need to go. So yes, as much as we, as much as this is difficult, as much as we spend time, I think the, the person that's going to be happiest about this meeting is, is Mr. Hertchek, because he's going to have to, he can stop meeting with me now about this budget. So, so that is something I've been in his office a few times this week, figuring out, like, where can we go? Is there any adjustments? And, and even though that there is an increase, things are tight all over, in every, in every department, they're tight. So there's just, there's just no way of looking at it. Counselor Susan Penner brought something up about the Chamber of Commerce grant. And I think that needs to be relooked at at the next study session. That, that's a grant that's significant. It keeps growing. Tight, that's tied to assessment and, and growth in business, and that's always growing every year. So I think that's something we need to look at as well. Thank you for bringing that up. But counsel, I will, I will support this, this motion. And I'll call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, counsel, we'll move on to item B. This is variance 2025-02. This is referring to 268 and 274 Home Street. This is on page 29 of our package. Mr. Worthing, could you please introduce that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The variance file, V-2025-02, as you noted, for 268 and 274 Home Street, is being applied for by Kingdom Home Building, Inc., with the owners, 68 Home Street being Kingdom Home Building, Inc., and the owners of 274 Home Street being Tommy and Sandra Petkow, and Bernhard and Mary Petkow. Purpose of the variance application is to permit a maximum height of four stories for a multifamily building. Whereas, the maximum height pursuant to the City of Steinbeck zoning by law for the RMD residential medium density zone is three stories. The application is arising due to proposal to have grade-level parking as part of the proposed multifamily development. Notices, as are required under the Planning Act, were issued. As of just prior to council meeting, there was one letter of correspondence that was received, and the city clerk will distribute copies to council.
Thank you.
Other than that, there is no other correspondence on this file.
Thank you.
With respect to the application, this particular proposal was the subject of a rezoning in, in early 2024. And the proposal was to seek council approval to rezone the property from RLD residential low-density to RMD residential medium-density. That public hearing was held on March 19th, 2024. And ultimately, due to the number of objections registered at that public hearing, a further public hearing held by the Manitoba Municipal Board was held in August of this year. a further public hearing held by the Manitoba Municipal Board was held in August of this year. And evidence presented at the board hearing confirmed that the site would have an underground parking level plus three stories for residential units. And pursuant to the, to the application, there is some uncertainty at the time of writing of this report as there was no available information to determine what potentially was, in fact, the intention of the, of the developer and to what degree the proposed fourth story consisting of the parking level of the proposed development was intended to look like. Having said that, it is recommended that city council request from the proponent to confirm how much of the underground parking is in fact planned to be below grade and how much is planned to be above grade. And subsequent to that, if approval is contemplated by council and council is satisfied with the evidence provided, it is also recommended that any approval be subject to any conditions council fields are appropriate, subject to a development agreement, and to any new information that may be provided at this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Workington. Okay, at this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Is the applicant here today? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you for having me. My name's Luke Weeb. I live at 3001736E Herschfeld Road. I represent Kingdom Home Building, and this may be one of the quicker presentations I've ever done. I have an outline on page two, a variance request with height difference and conclusion. As Mr. Workington alluded, when I sent in my information originally with the hearing, public hearing that we did roughly one year ago, I had this, this 3D rendering here, which I still have in my presentation today. You can see that the parcade, it's underground, but it's not fully underground. That was, that was how I presented it. I asked the, the engineer design consultant what the depth would be, because this is for illustration purposes, and he estimated roughly six and a half feet, six feet underground, and then the rest would be above. It's roughly a meter above grade till the main floor height of the first floor of the apartment buildings. So if this was a three-story building in the National and Manitoba Building Code, it would still be considered, under the building code, as a three-story building with an underground parcade. However, in your City of Steinbach bylaws, a three-story building with parking underground is still considered a four-story, whether it's underground or above grade. So that's why I need to apply for a variance for that. So the building design and style and overall component of the site is not changing. So the purpose of the variance is, as I said, to allow a heated parcade to be constructed under three stories of residential units. So I asked the design consultant to tell me what the height difference would be. He said it's approximately 53 foot nine. This is if, assuming I didn't do a flat roof, which is still possible. However, if I do a roof similar to this, it would be 53 foot nine to the highest peak from the, the side of the building, if done with main floor parking, which is on your left, and approximately 47 feet if done partially underground, as originally illustrated at the original hearing there, rezoning hearing. So it's a difference of six foot nine. I am personally not partial to either. They're both good options. They have pros and cons. If you, if you want to know or ask, feel free to. Administration has indicated that the variance to allow a fourth story, RMD for parking, which the city has done on several occasions, in RMD for a parking garage, is required whether it's a three-story with parking partially underground or four-story with main floor parcade. So my request today is that council approve the variance to permit the fourth story for parking and the decision whether partially underground or main level be decided through the development agreement and engineered construction plan submission process. This will allow the engineers, both my own and the city engineers, as well as the design team, the time they require to confirm which options make the most sense for this projected building design. I would like to say that I'm not changing the overall, the design of this project at all. However, we're not required to submit completed construction plans until we get to the development stage, development agreement stage and construction plan review with your engineer department planner and building inspectors. So that is why, that is something that I can confirm, because I'm not the, the professional that draws those plans. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
So just to confirm, you're not increasing units? I think there's a perception, maybe that by adding a fourth story, you're adding another level of units.
No.
The number of units stays the same?
Yeah.
What you're just requesting is the six foot.
The number of units, yes. So the number of units, the number of units will, has never been 100% assured yet, because it's always dependent on the parking. So whatever our parking with the final construction plan, when I speak with lazy in the end, when I submit those plans, I'll already know. But that, that's what, that's what will dictate the amount of units, so that it will not be different, because I'm not adding a level.
Is it not an extra?
No, I'm not adding and add an extra story. It's just still three levels. It's just the, the main floor, like the first floor of rental units there, because there's three floors, is now about, on this other plan here, is six foot. Oh yeah, here we go. So this is kind of if it was four out of the ground, so. What happened there? Did I lose my other page?
I got what I.
Sure, he'll do it. Yeah, okay, thanks. So yeah, yeah, it's six foot nine difference. And like I said, I'm, I'm open to doing either option, but I would usually, that's something like the engineer and design consultant would confirm that, what makes the most sense. One of the pros, I did allude to some pros and cons, is that we wouldn't be digging a massive hole if we didn't do it underground. It's more dirt to haul away and more time, right, to dig. But like I said, there's, both have the pros and cons as far as, from a cost and, and time, construction and all that, but yeah.
Thank you. I do have a question for administration. Is that something, like deciding whether the parking is grade level or underground, is that something that will come out in the development agreement? Or is that something that the, the developer should have decided here tonight?
The opinion of administration is that that is a very specific design question that should only be decided by and communicated by the developer to council so that council can make a decision whether or not to approve the requested fourth story based on all of the information. That would be a component that would be unusual to be in a development agreement, in my opinion.
Okay, then, in that, in that content, we will ask you to give us direction, whether it will be grade parking or underground parking.
So if I'm understanding, you're not, you're not willing to allow me to request to have the option? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we're, we're looking at, so that we can make a decision based on the information we have. We need to know, are you going to do grade parking or underground parking? That is the way I understand it from our administration.
Yeah, I would say I'm comfortable with sticking with what I originally presented with it underground, if that's, if I'm being forced to decide on one. Just stick with what's originally on the right side of the plan there, yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're going to be.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
You're inclined to go with the original, which was underground?
Yep.
Okay, council, so the, the variance request is for the fourth level to be underground parking?
A question for administration.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So normally in our, in, in our packages, there's a recommendation from administration as to whether we should approve or not. Your recommendation indicated that there's some uncertainty here, because we don't have the specifics as far as what was being presented. With what the applicant has presented, saying that he is, that he is going, if this was approved, it would be the underground parking. Based on that information, what is the official recommendation from administration on this variance?
That was one component. There was some uncertainty based on the information that administration reviewed from the applicant. Now that the applicant has explicitly stated that the requested variance approval for the fourth story of the subject property will consist of an entirely underground parcade, administration is satisfied that that is clear. Therefore, if council is comfortable with that fourth requested story being underground parking, if council chooses to approve, that would be a recommendation of administration.
Okay, just a follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know that we've, we've, we've definitely have approved several cases that are somewhat similar as far as allowing for the underground parking. I know that there's been discussion about whether, had we made the decision about changing the zoning bylaw to make the, so that the parking would no longer necessarily count as an extra story? Or had, had we not decided to make that change yet? I know there were some, there's been some discussion around that.
There was some discussion around that. However, I cannot recall what is exactly in the city's proposed zoning bylaw. That is something that would be presented for first reading in about a month.
Okay.
Okay, good. We can look at it at that time?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so now we don't, we're looking at, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Weeb, is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Go ahead. Take the podium, state your name and address, and then you can, can you?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council. My name's Ben Bobrowski. I live 262 Home Street, which is immediately adjacent to where this is planning to be built. First off, there's another couple that would have liked to have been here today. They couldn't. They sent me a message and asked if I could read what they would like to be said. Is it okay if I proceed with that?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's from David and Arilin Workington. They are of 412 Hospital, and they're unable to attend this evening. Thank you for taking time tonight to consider the thoughts and concerns of our families and specifically this region of our community, where so many of us have called our homes for years. We understand that a three-story building in the corner of Hospital and Home Street is now inevitable, but we want to voice our concerns over this four-story project. We care for our neighbors, and this build would greatly affect their homes and privacy. Therefore, we do not stand for and cannot support this proposal. We acknowledge a building of this type would be benefit to our community as a whole. However, we do not believe it would, that this is the correct location for it. There are many areas of Steinbach where a project of this size makes sense, but right beside single-family homes is simply not it. We understand that there are other large buildings in the area, but not, but no one who lives in this neighborhood has asked for any of these large buildings, and time and time again, we're being ignored. We hear the reasoning that we need to keep business on Main Street, and that is a benefit to the community, but we are ignoring the fact that business is no longer just on Main Street. Steinbach is growing, and I firmly believe that this project is better suited near areas, sorry, near the areas of town where it'll blend in and not stand out. We, as a city, provide, sorry, pride ourselves on our heritage. We keep and preserve our heritage, heritage homes. We try our best to maintain our beautiful trees and land. And there's a good chance that one of Steinbach's last enormous heritage trees, positioned directly beside the complex, will not endure the upheaval during root destruction that this will bring. And lastly, I want to end with the question. What would it take for the council to consider what are, sorry, what we are saying here as a community? We are asked to attend these meetings, to voice our concerns, and time and time again, are ignored. We plead with you now. Let our voices be heard, and we ask you to kindly listen to us. At the last meeting, you told us we need to think of others and for the betterment of those around us. City council, may we ask that of you. Will you think of our communities and those lives that we vote here? That was from David and Arilin Workington.
And they're from 412 Hospital?
412 Hospital, yeah, just the other way down the road. And a few things from myself. I'm two, I'm from 262 Home Street, which is whatever on the map, where the grayed-out ones where this is happening. Directly beside that, to the northwest, that would be. Sorry, I'll pull up my thing. For me, it's, it's a community with families, some of here today. And privacy is a big thing. And I know you can call it in-ground, but six feet up is still, I would say, considered something. That would be a whole nother story of people that can look into all of our yards. I have an 11, almost 12-month-old daughter, who's going to be running around all summer. That doesn't make me feel very comfortable. The reason I wasn't at the original hearing is that's because the evening my wife gave birth, so. And another thing is, with the way these streets are angled, if the taller this thing gets, I don't see any sunlight going to hit my yard probably until mid-afternoon at this point. If, if the structure goes up. And trying to keep a nice yard, trying to have families, trying to be outside and stay healthy, I don't see that being a benefit. I realize that is most strongly on me, not as a community as a whole. That, for me, at least, that's a point still. And another thing is, as our family grows, we had considered the concept of doing renovations and improving our place ourselves. But with stuff like this, it really makes you want to lean back from that and just get out and go somewhere else. And I don't know, those are just a few of my personal concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Take the podium.
Dear Mayor and members of the council, thank you for taking your time to hear what I have to say. My name is Woodson Clausen of 243 Home Street. I would like to share some reasons why I am opposed to this apartment being built as a four-story building. Number one is that the people beside and across from the apartment building would have no privacy in their yards and homes. And number two, with the building being an extra story tall, the neighboring yards would most likely have little to no sunlight in their yards due to the building blocking it. Number three is that there are also large, healthy trees in the area being built on, and they would have to be destroyed to make room for such a large building. And the traffic on my street is already like 60 miles an hour plus, and I'm not really allowed to play in my front yard. And with the parking for the apartment, it would most likely speed up the traffic. Thank you for hearing what I have to say.
And if I could also say a few things. My name is Devon Clausen. Obviously, same residence as my son, 243 Home Street. And so I would also just like to reiterate the points that my neighbor here spoke about. We feel that this building, and this is not a slam against kingdom builders or anything like that, we just feel that our neighborhood is probably one of the most, least, not the most least, the least appropriate place to have a structure like this. We've been surrounded by construction with the hospital expansion. We've been surrounded by construction with the event center. And now it would be more construction with this larger structure. And so, yeah, it does, it does hamper the family lifestyle quite a bit. There are other places in the community that I think would be much better suited for this, just for the location. And I know it's, it's already been approved. Probably nothing that we're going to say here will sway that. But we just want to make sure that our voices are being heard, and we're trying to do our due diligence and our civic duty to just voice these things as well. So yeah, thank you guys for your time. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for hearing us.
Thank you very much. Anyone, anyone else here with comments, questions, or objections?
Good evening. My name is Eliana Workington. I live at 251 Home Street. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to share my objection to variance V-2025-02. And it is my understanding that it would be prudent to reject this variance application. My family lives near the 268 and 274 Home Street addresses. And accepting this proposal would be extremely upsetting and disruptive to our family and the other residents in the area. Allowing this additional level of parking in the development would have serious negative consequences for the surrounding neighborhood and nearby residents. As mentioned, immediate concerns would be traffic that comes with the expanded parking structure, increased vehicles, and making it potentially dangerous for pedestrians, cyclists, families in the community, longer wait times at intersections, high risk of accidents, and so forth. Another issue would be noise levels. Parking structures are not quiet. And an extra level would mean a steady stream of cars coming and going at all hours, engines revving, car doors slamming, alarms going off, headlights flashing, and sounds echo and carry in parking areas, which would only amplify these disruptions. The character and aesthetics of our neighborhood would also suffer. From my understanding, the city's bylaws were put in place to maintain balance between residential and commercial development. And a structure exceeding the height limit, despite the underground nature, would make that area feel more industrial and create an environment that is less welcoming and increase. that is less welcoming and increase congestion. And then a further concern would be the impact that the expansion could have on the integrity of the surrounding ground and structural stability of nearby buildings. Parking structures and taller developments require deep foundational work, which can cause soil shifting and damage to adjacent properties. Vibrations from construction and long-term vehicle movement in a parking level could also lead to cracks in foundations. We can support structures and long-term wear on nearby buildings. The added weight and strain on the land may also lead to increased drainage and erosion issues, creating further risks for homes in proximity. Without a thorough geotechnical assessment, it would be impassable, sorry, irresponsible to allow the structure that could compromise the safety and durability of existing properties. Furthermore, excavation and construction could disturb the root systems of large established trees in the area, which may create additional hazards. When tree roots are damaged, the trees become unstable and pose a falling risk, especially during storms or winds, et cetera, and damaged roots can also lead to tree decay and disease, not only reducing environmental and aesthetic value of the area, but also increasing the likelihood of limbs breaking off unexpectedly. So I do urge you to reject this variance and uphold the principles that keep our city and our neighborhoods enjoyable. Residents of this area should not have to bear the burden of a decision that could prioritize convenience for developers over the quality of life for those who call this area home. So I thank you for your time and consideration, and hope that the city council will make the right decision in preserving the character, safety, and well-being of our community. Thank you.
Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections? I'll ask one more time. Is anyone here with comments, questions, or objections? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the, oh, do you want to respond to any of this?
Sure.
Just a few points. I mean, I, I do, I do hear you folks. I, as a developer, it is very difficult doing development downtown. It's something that, I know maybe me saying it's dear to me might not mean a lot to everybody. However, I've watched the city. I've grown, grown up downtown just across from the event center on Reimer Avenue. I think it's the Invision now, or one of those buildings is on that property, and that's where I grew up riding my bike, and I love, I love downtown myself, and I can see myself one day when my kids move out, when I move out of the country, to move back to downtown because I love it. However, I feel like it's often those that want to move downtown, that live in all the rental properties that I am so blessed to, to own, those people also have a voice, and I mentioned that before. They want to live downtown. They want to walk and, and, and support businesses downtown, and I know that's not a reason that those that are in the immediate area should just think, oh, it's great to have a big building beside. I understand that is not something that should make them want that. However, you know, those, those folks want to live there. Change is difficult, and I just want to acknowledge that. I do hear the concerns. We do work with your engineers to ensure that all the necessary steps are taken to safely construct a building, just like anywhere else in town, where, where your team does a great job requiring, they put restrictions and requirements on us. So kind of in closing, we're going to ensure we have enough parking. We're going to ensure the, the building is, as I alluded, I was totally fine with just keeping it with exactly as I presented. However, I apologize, we didn't do the variance application at the same time as the original hearing, but the, I have not added another story in principle to what I originally presented. It's just, it's just the same as it was before. However, I had to ask for this today instead of doing it last time. I apologize for that. And then another thing would be just, yeah, the, the timeline, as, as I mentioned before, I wasn't planning on starting it last year, probably wouldn't even start this year. I know that's not a huge consolation, but due to the, the hospital expansion there, we wanted to wait until that was done. However, I do ask for your consideration in this. There's a lot of people that would love to live in this home, building so close to, to make their home so close to the downtown event center, the hospital, professionals, seniors, and even some smaller young families would actually love to live in, in this place, just like they do our, our other rental properties. So thank you very much.
Question for the applicant.
Okay, there's a question for you. Go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if the variance is denied, what is the impact on the project? Does it, would it essentially mean building fewer dwelling units in order to deal with the parking requirement?
I mean, as far as, for me, this is the way I've designed the project, so I would be going back to square one, just a redesign. It's not something I, I plan to do at this time.
But the question, answer the question. Would, would it, in the redesign, would there be less units?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead.
A question for the applicant, through you, Mr. Mayor. You had said, and I don't know if it was, I just want to get clarification, because in the presentation that you gave to us, it says partially underground. When you had said that you would commit, you had said fully underground. I just want to get clarification.
Partially underground is, the reason it's called partially underground is because it's the, the main floor grade, if you look at the doors on the left, that's where your entrance lobby and stairs and elevator would be, which is kind of ground level, maybe a foot above the parking lot, but the actual level of the first-grade apartments are about four to five feet above what the grade level is, so that's why I said partially underground. So the way it was presented originally, this is the same image that was presented when I did the rezoning. That's how I would commit to doing it, the same as that, yeah.
Sounds, thank you. And follow-up to administration, if you may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Warkington, if, in our, as council, can we make a approval subject to it being partially underground and that be binding?
Council can set any conditions it chooses. That would be in addition to the typical development agreement. However, if, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, now I'm confused, only because Counselor Penner, you've raised the, the point about partially underground. My notes from the discussions prior to the objectors speaking was that the applicant confirmed that the proposed parking be entirely underground, and I'm not quite certain what, what is actually being proposed.
Well, the information I have from this meeting today and, and prior discussions with the applicant is that the, the, the parking would be partially underground, like four feet of the parking would be above grade, I, and I believe that, I think we have that somewhere else in our community. I think Brooklyn Terrace is like that, where it's a little bit further up, so the balconies for the first floor are about, about four feet above grade. It's a built-in, it's actually built-in security.
Correct. So, may I answer? That, yeah, so the, the reason I said underground, just compared to main-level parking. So I use the word underground, partially underground, they're both underground. It's just partially underground as I presented it at the original hearing with the 3D rendering as seen here.
Does that answer? No?
It, it, maybe. What, a further recommendation then that I would have for council is if council is proceeding and wishes to consider approval, I would recommend that council specify exactly to what degree the, the underground parking is in fact below grade versus above grade. However, council wants to determine, because that appears to be the essence of this particular public hearing, it would provide clarity both to the applicant and also to administration.
Okay, so you're asking on administration is whether we approve or deny, whatever, if we approve, to have a, like a, like a speck of what the, the underground means?
For example.
Fully, fully or four feet?
Either fully, or if there's a certain amount in feet or percentage that's above grade, so that administration would be able to appropriately evaluate the, the application or the applicant's, you know, proposal once it gets to the design and approval stage.
Okay, okay. Everyone's clear? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question to the applicant, just to be totally clear on this issue. Are you telling us today that 47 feet will be the maximum height of this building?
As I mentioned, so as I mentioned on the, for illustration purpose, 3D rendering, yeah, the design consultant, I'm not the designer, the truss manufacturer that builds the roof, they designed the truss, not myself, that we usually try to design the roof as low as we can do, actually ends up costing less, but it also is lower and not as steep, safer to reshingle. So I'm not at liberty to give the exact, that's why I said it's an estimate. However, the National and Manitoba Building Code allows under Part 9, which could help you with this request by Mr. Warkington, that I would only be allowed to build one meter, it's one meter above grade for the parcade. It's still an underground parcade, but it can be one meter above under the Part 9 Building Code, so it's not considered a commercial, I think it's called C3, part, sorry, Part 3 Building Code. I would be under a Part 9 Building Code, which is the same as a three, three-story apartment that has no parcade, if it's within one meter or lower.
So that would be potentially the?
Yep, just within Part 9 Building Code, yeah. I would just.
Is administration comfortable with that?
Okay.
So what you're telling us today, Mr. Mayor, if I could just continue, you're not sure that the building's going to be 47 feet. It could be between 47 and 53?
No, I'm confident that because I informed you after being asked to choose one option and, and just stick with that, that it would be, it would be very close to that 47 number that I gave you there, but I'm, it's an estimate because the design consultant, he's not the one who actually designs the trusses, the roof manufacturer. He took all the other dimensions off of other plans, so we know it's very close, but the company that builds the actual roof and designs that, they determine the height, the peak of the height, like the top of the peak, not, not myself or the draftsman. So it'd be close to the 47 feet, but that's just the peak. That's the level of, the actual third level of apartments won't change.
Okay, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop talking about how high the building's gonna be. I think administration wants us to focus matter on how, how the underground parking, okay? So that's what we're going to consider now? We're gonna, so.
Sure.
Are you, is there anything for?
That's it, thank you.
Then we will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Second by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Clausen already mentioned, the projects, there's a project going ahead. The, the zoning's already been approved for multifamily, so that, that piece of it's already been decided. The reason I am supporting this is I actually live near many multifamily buildings, and one in particular, actually two, that stand out to me are ones with underground parking, because what the underground parking does is it actually lessens the need for outdoor parking lots, and so it's actually aesthetically more pleasing, there's less vehicles just, you know, sitting on a parking lot in front of a building. So we could say, no, we're not going to do the underground parking. The project would need to be redeveloped. I'm not convinced it would be a project that the neighborhood would be happier with, because now you've got all these vehicles actually parking, on-surface parking. So I, I really like the multifamily that have the, the, the parking under. I think it actually just makes it more aesthetically pleasing. I understand and empathize that the neighborhood, again, has construction fatigue. That is definitely understandable, but I think when all is said and done, when the event center, when the hospital, this project is done, I actually think it's going to be really a nice fam, still family-oriented area that's going to be walkable, and I think they'll still be able to have a good sense of community. But as far as the parking, I'm comfortable with the partially underground parking.
Anything for?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, if I may just make a friendly amendment, just to include subject to underground parking, if you would be amenable to that?
What would you like to?
Just subject to it being underground parking.
Like, so like, like, but we just had this discussion, like how administration's wondering how underground? Like, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know what this, you know, the specs.
If, as the applicant said, that she can go no more above one meter above grade than one meter above grade.
I don't want to, I'm, I'm going to defer to.
I would like to clarify for council. That is pursuant to the Manitoba Building Code. City of Steinbach Council can set any conditions it wishes. Right now, the City of Steinbach zoning bylaw, the fact that it is a request for a fourth story is the purpose of the variance application. The applicant has indicated that the fourth story will consist of an underground parking level that will be underground to a certain degree or to no degree. Based on the information that I have in my notes as presented by the applicant, the applicant indicated that he was prepared to place this underground or this parcade, parking level fully underground. If there is a different position of council, administration is requesting that council indicate to what degree this level of parking can be above grade.
I'm, I'm not an engineer or builder or designer. I, I just don't see how I could comment on to what degree. It's partially underground. I'm personally, I'm comfortable with either of these proposals. I, I don't know how I would say to what degree it should be underground. Am I understanding this, this drawing is partially underground?
Are you, are you agreeable to the one meter that was suggested by the applicant, whether that is afterthought, but that, that's what the applicant did at, at the podium, suggest, a one meter above grade?
I'm not educated or an expert in that. I don't know how, I mean, sure, it's partially underground, I'm comfortable with partially Counselor Penner, what are your thoughts to this friendly amendment?
Open for discussion. It actually changes a lot for me, and I don't want to go too much because we're in, in this, but then we're not discussing the, the principles of a fourth story being underground versus actually adding a fourth story. So one is, this is a principle of something that we're moving towards in our bylaws already of a fourth story that's underground is, should just be allowed, versus this is now changing the entire dynamic of, it's essentially almost another public hearing, which I voted against last time.
So spell out your friendly amendment to me.
Motion to, that, that the motion is to approve subject to the parking garage be no more than a meter above grade.
Sure.
Okay.
Fine.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm in favor of this motion and, with the amendment, due to the fact that this is something that we are working towards, that this doesn't change what was already voted for and approved for by council in terms of the project that is, was presented at that time. It was already approved. Having said that, I do want to greatly send my thanks and appreciation to the community that's come out, not only once, but twice in some cases, to the municipal board hearing as well. It's exhausting being in these meetings sometimes, especially in the gallery and waiting for your turn, so I want to extend my appreciation to that. But this isn't about the project now at this point for my vote to approve. This is about the, the principle of fourth story underground shouldn't be considered a story.
Anything for the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will take a different approach here. I've heard both sides. I think it's important to listen carefully to the applicant and administration, and of course, to the neighborhood. I'll be voting against the variance. There's a couple of reasons. Obviously, as Counselor Penner had alluded, there was an initial vote on the rezoning itself, and we're not relitigating that right now, but that was a close vote. That was 4-3. I had voted against it because I have concerns, I had concerns at the time about this being rezoned to, to medium density, because I didn't think it would fit into the neighborhood. Nevertheless, the rezoning's been approved, so that is not what is up for debate right now. I cannot relitigate that. However, we do have a variance request, which in most cases, I would tend to agree with Counselor Penner, that, both Counselors Penner's frankly on this point, that having an under, underground or partially underground or three-quarters underground or whatever number we're coming up with here, I'm not really sure, but whatever, having a, having the, the story be parking as opposed to the residences, when it's at least partially underground, I understand that, that, that's actually a fairly reasonable thing to allow, and then you still have three regular stories of residential. Here's my issue. I had concerns with this being rezoned medium density in the first place, because I had serious questions as to that level of density increase in that area. By allowing this variance, we're allowing more density, more residential than would otherwise happen, because if this were denied, yes, the project would need to be redesigned, and inevitably, that would mean fewer units. That would mean less impact in the neighborhood, potentially even maybe not as many stories, who knows, because it would require a redesign. In terms of, it really would have been better if this variance had been dealt with at the time of the initial application, of the rezoning. That's normally, that tends to be what happens here, where we have a debate and a vote on the rezoning and on the very- the rezoning and on the variance request, because normally, a project is presented in a more full and complete sense. I appreciate the fact that the applicant has now given us some, a more complete version here, in terms of what, what he is proposing to do. But again, just the very fact that we're sort of going back and forth about, you know, how far underground is it going to be and this sort of thing, indicates to me that this thing is not settled. And so if not allowing the variance means that there are fewer residences, less impact to the neighborhood, and that would mean fewer cars, considering that I had concerns with the rezoning to begin with, I'm not interested in a variance that adds to the problem by having more dwelling units than would otherwise be allowed, hence I'll vote against the variance.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If counsel recalls, when the rezoning came up last time, I was against it. We heard a number of neighborhood, it wasn't a usual council meeting where just two or three neighbors came and objected. We had a large number of people in the area objecting to this building in the area, and I voted against it at that time. And as Counselor Swigstra said, you know, for a number of points that were raised, I agree with what he said. I again, I can't go along with the motion in this case.
Thank you. Anything closing?
Yeah, this is interesting to me. I've been on council for, I think it's 12 or 14 years, something like that now, and in my entire time, when we're looking at our official community plan and planning for the downtown, we try and want to increase density in the downtown, we want to keep our downtown vibrant, we want infill multifamily, everything we've kind of talked about, this project represents, and now when we have a project that represents what we're going for and actually falls in line with those plans, you know, half of council isn't supporting it, and I find that interesting. This, this project does represent, it is basically a buffer between single family and, you know, more commercial with the hospital and event center there. It allows for walkability, it, which is something we want, we want more density downtown. It will decrease car usage because people are in walkable distance downtown. So I just think this is, I understand any time a project like this comes to us in an area where there's single family, it's difficult for the neighborhood. But at the same time, when we're talking about redeveloping the downtown, a project like this is exactly what we're looking for. So I, I'm pleased to support it, and I think it's going to be a good addition and something we, we value in our area downtown there.
Thank you. Well, counsel, this has been a bit of a confusing, a confusing file, one with the developer didn't come with a clear desire of what he wanted to do, but that was dealt with at the meeting. I think that worked out okay. You know, counsel, you all know that when, up until three years ago, we lived in the downtown and we were surrounded by multifamily. Yes, they were all four, four stories, underground parking, three stories up. Yes, it does affect your shade, and, but we, we adjusted and we bought a bunch of hostas, and they love shade, and we had a beautiful backyard regardless. I think there can be beauty amongst multifamily as well. It worked very well. Strategic planting of trees, and during summer, we didn't even know there was multifamily behind us, because the trees filled it in so nicely. And, and it does work. You can live harmoniously with multifamily like we're looking for to densify our downtown, and single-family dwellings can live side by side, and it can work very, very nicely. And, and I, I know that we, because we did it, we did it for 11 years downtown. It was, it worked very well. The painful part was when the, when the, when the building came in, the thought of the building, that was the worst part. Once it was there, the whole neighborhood would adjust around the building. It, it worked out very, very nice. We had three 36-plex around us, and so that was, that's considerably higher than this densification. And as far as, did we notice traffic? Not really. Downtown's always busy. There's always lots of traffic downtown. We didn't notice necessarily extra traffic just because, because the downtown was, like, was, was being built up. So I will, I will support this, to the motion as was amended, because I do think this is, the long-term for this, this region, I, this area, I do believe it'll be a lot of institutional, and I think it'll be, there'll be more multifamily in the long-term. I mean, you look, I'm looking 15, 20 years down the road, I'm not looking next year, but down the road, this, this area will be going through a renaissance as the rest of downtown is too, as you see more and more, the development downtown is, the, the skylight downtown is changing, and, and, and this is part of that change. Over the question, all those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Okay, we have 6C, this is variance 2025-3. This is referring to 430 Rockford Street. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workington, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. File, variance file V-2025-03 for 430 Rockwood Street. The applicant for the variance is Savannah Grenier of Smith Newfield Joedwenn LLP. The owners of the property are Matthew and Ashley Friesen. Purpose of the variance is threefold. Firstly, to permit a detached accessory building to have a rear yard setback of 4.1 feet, whereas the RR Rural Residential Zone requires a minimum setback of five feet. Secondly, to permit a detached accessory building to have a side yard setback of 3.7 feet, whereas the RR Rural Residential Zone requires a minimum setback of five feet. Thirdly, to permit a minimum lot width of 70 feet, whereas the minimum lot width of the RR Rural Residential Zone is 100 feet. The purpose of this application is to bring this property into compliance in order to facilitate a pending sale. Notices as are required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. Recommendation from administration is for counsel to approve this variance application.
Thank you, Mr. Workington. Is the applicant present today? Okay. Seeing no one, is, is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Seeing nothing, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counselor Hebert. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As there are no objections here, administration has recommended that we approve the variance, and the fact that this building has been here for a substantial amount of time and has not negatively affected anybody, I don't see any reason why we cannot approve this variance.
Okay, anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was at this location this morning and had a look, and it's not encroaching on anybody's property, and I understand, you know, in order for the pending sale that this variance goes through, so I don't have an issue with it.
Anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing further.
Call for the question, all those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Okay, counsel, we've got delegations, reports of retardations, we'll move to 9E, council payable back of the book, all had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Penner.
No comments.
Call for the question, all's in favor. Where is Counselor Hebert when you need him? We've got excavator licenses, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Swigstra, second by Counselor Penner. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't express this as eloquently as Counselor Bill Hebert, so I won't even try. I just hope we approve these excavator licenses.
I hope so, too. Anything of-
No.
Call for the question, all those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Is there any, any questions of counsel at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to number 11. This is correspondence petitions. We've got the Steinbeck Manitoba 55 Plus Games, 2005 Committee requests for sponsorship. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Take his information. Okay? We've got the Southeast Event Center Farmer's Market. Counsel, how would you like to proceed?
What do we need to, is this just a motion or resolution or?
Administration would recommend if counsel has no concerns that a resolution be approved, indicating exactly that to the, the applicants or the requesters.
Yeah, make a motion through. Second by Counselor Penner. Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
I love this idea of having a farmer's market downtown at, on the event center parking lot. I'm sure it will be very well received. There's two sides to that, all, for, you know, small businesses to be able to sell their products, I think is excellent, and also I think it's a great service to have in our city for people to be able to go pick up fresh produce and whatever else is offered. So I think this is a great idea, and I think it's just one of the many benefits we'll see to having the event center downtown.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no better way to support local and support Canadian than at a farmer's market, and it's a great incubator for local businesses as well. So I think it's appropriate on this dark tariff Tuesday that we bring some light of how there are local businesses that are wanting to thrive in Steinbeck.
Okay, great. Counsel, anything further? Anything closing?
No.
Counsel, I agree. I think this is long overdue. I think we've needed a downtown farmer's market for many, many years, and I'm excited to see this happen. So call for the question, all those in favor, opposed, that is carried. We've got 11C, the St. Rat River Road or Watershed District minutes of January 21. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Take his information at this time. And we've got the Eastman Regional Municipal Committee South Subcommittee minutes of February 10, 2025. Counsel, how would you like to take his information at this time, too? There is no other business, looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Penner. Call for the question, all those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Next regular council meeting is on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, at 7:30.